Everybody's here, yay, welcome back here.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, Bruce, come forward please sir. We got twisted in our dates and things I guess, and who knows what happened, but that's irrelevant. You're here today. What we talked about is an update. What I told Bruce is, could you come, because he and I were talking, you know, I said, could you come, talk to the board, tell us why we need the outreach program today? We know why it went there, bring us up to date. And he's agreed to come do that this evening. We also talked about making some changes where we might put the outreach program to continue, and the, I think it's the last number you gave us, is in the budget. So it's not like it got cut pending our conversation. We also talked about putting the outreach program in the back portion of the building, putting a window in, a back door and so on, so they had private access, and we would have the balance of the building for community use. Now has been concerned, a lot like Main Courier, that community would really find it very helpful, very handy to have the use of the facility for birthdays, showers, whatever they do. And we could have a win-win on that. So I guess that's the focus, and I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, well, Doug, just as a point of information, I brought a couple of brochures. One is about the services that JCO provides overall at the agency. And then one is specific to the outreach program. Would you give me a little bit more detail specifically about what the outreach programs are?
I guess just for a point of clarity, that is the same as that is the senior outreach program we're talking about?
No, community outreach.
Community outreach, okay.
Senior outreach program is different, you'll see that. And the last year that we have numbers for is from October of 2011 through September of this year. So to give you an idea of the amount of services that are being provided, I'm not sure if I have enough copies. Give me my copy after this. What you'll see is that at the outreach center this year, there was a total of 814 services provided to 589 households and approximately 1,200 individuals.
Were all those in the town?
All those are in town Plasberg. Every outreach center that we have services specifically that town, okay? So these are all town residents. We're an alternate certifier for heat, so they processed 170 heat applications. The heat applications that we do are for a very specific population, and they are the under 60 non-PA clients. So they're not receipt of services from the Department of Public Social Services, okay? And they have to be under the age of 60. If they receive services from the Department of Social Services or they're over the age of 60, they automatically get a mail-out application. The people who are not in that category have to go someplace and fill out the application, they have to provide all the documentation, it's quite a lengthy process. We also did, through this outreach site, 292 emergency food packages. We generally give out three days' worth of food depending upon the size of the family. And as you can see, that was for 860 individuals. They arranged for more than 200 rides to medical appointments for 65 either seniors or disabled individuals, okay? So that's one of the things that we do through the Rural Transportation Program is we provide rides. It's primarily seniors, there are some disabled individuals. But there's, the idea behind the program is that there are a lot of folks that, especially seniors, that are capable of living alone. The problem that they have is getting to and from their medical appointments. Often if they can't get to and from their medical appointments, it forces them into their assisted living or into a nursing home. What we do through the Rural Transportation is fix them up with volunteers and get them to and from their medical appointments, which allows them to stay in their homes and generally saves the county, I think considering that alone.
That's appointments only? Have you ever had anyone ask about transport 10 o'clock at night, Uncle Harvey's not feeling well, could we get a ride to the ER?
No, but you and I talked about that, and I had a conversation, subsequent to our conversation, I was at a meeting with Stevens Monday. What Stevens recommended to me was that we really, our first contact should probably be with Eric Day, okay? So if you would, you want to set something up, you want to talk about that with Eric, I'd be happy to do that. Marty, we could do that?
Sure.
The ball just got tossed. Yeah, Marty has really, Marty and Gerard actually have really done the, you know, negotiating with ambulance contracts and things, and I would leave that in there, and his, Marty's here daily, so it's a little more flexible, and I'm sure he'll communicate with Gerard. But there might be a model there that we could really turn into a win-win for everyone.
When I talked to Stevens, he didn't really know of anything. I asked him if he'd heard of that kind of a situation before, and he hadn't really heard of anything, but he thought that Eric might. So, especially being with the, you know, the emergency dispatch. So I thought that was a good idea, and that was something we could follow up on.
Now, one, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
One quick question, Bruce. Of this 65 seniors, are there any of them that are eligible or could use the cart bus? Because I see a little bit of a duplication of service here. The county has the cart bus that makes itself available. I believe it goes to the hospital. Now, it might not be the most convenient time for somebody to get on the cart bus to go and have to wait around for doctor's visit or whatever else, but is there, is there any duplication of services with what you're doing?
Well, depends upon how you look at it, okay? From a very technical standpoint, sure, okay? But there's a couple of things that make the cart bus impractical for some of the seniors that we're talking about, that, most of the seniors that we're talking about. One, they don't, they're not, they're not considered for parent transit, so they have to get to a stop.
Okay.
Okay? And second of all, the length of time that they're gone, okay? Because it often means that even from here, they're going to be gone for a considerable period of time. And very often with the seniors that we're talking about, they're not capable of sitting around for an extended period of time. The driver brings them there, generally waits for them, and brings them home.
So there's kind of a qualification for this type of transport?
Yeah, we don't generally transport, I mean, a lot of the, you've got to remember, we're talking primarily seniors who don't have other kinds of transportation. So we're not going to be doing individuals who are, you know, 30 by 40 years old, who are totally capable, it doesn't matter if they're gone for six hours, you know, or four hours. We're talking about, very specifically about seniors, and generally, most of those seniors are not going to be physically able to like go to the hospital and wait for a couple of hours because they get there two hours before their appointment and stuff like that.
Is this the only, in the town, is this the only outreach?
This is the only outreach in the town of Plasberg.
So the whole town?
Yep.
And people that move and go from one town to another and back and stuff like that, do they qualify for any of these?
I'm not sure how you mean that.
Well, they live here for a month, and then they go and live here for a month, and they go live here for a month.
Oh yeah, I mean, there is definitely a transient population, and the transient population would collect, it would be eligible to get services at the different outreach, as long as they're residing in that town.
But since they don't reside in any one town for very long though?
When they reside in the town, then they're eligible to use those services.
If they're there for just a month, they still are in the town and allowed to use them.
Yep. Yep. You know, we see some of that, but there's, you know, there's not, we're not seeing...
No, you're not going to see it because I'm not going to come to you, but there's a lot.
Well, I never, you know, there's some people who, for example, they will move, they're not, they don't own a trailer, they're renting, you know, move from one part to the other part to the other part. You know, over a period of time, they might, you know, their address may change with some frequency. But that's just part of the...
And I'm talking about people that don't live with this person, live with that person.
We see some of that, but quite frankly, those aren't the folks that are coming to us.
No, I wouldn't think they would come to us, okay.
We also, you can see that we also did, provided 108 children with school supplies through the school supply drive, did 196 households for the Christmas gifts and food vouchers through the Christmas Bureau. We take all the applications through the Christmas Bureau. We pick up the toys and distribute all the, all the gifts and the food vouchers. And we also did 47 holiday baskets. That number has gone up, I don't know what it was for this year. This was through September, but this year, we had a huge increase in the call for holiday baskets, and we gave out over 500 holiday baskets this year. It was huge.
Now, you said this year holiday baskets, so you talked in Thanksgiving, or?
Yeah. Yeah, but anyone got your Christmas gift?
I was going to say.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Bruce, in your letter, you referenced to our reducing our allocation.
Yep.
Can you describe what you perceive to be the scope of reduction in outreach?
It's based upon the fact that Grace is going to retire.
Yeah.
Okay, and Grace has been there for a long period of time, so obviously, when we replace her, the starting wage is going to be significantly reduced.
Okay, so you're not really talking about fewer hours, you're talking about...
Not talking about fewer hours.
A person that'll be already an adolescent.
Yep.
Grace has, Grace has been there for, I don't know, I'm going to guess she's been there more than 25 years?
Grace has been there over 30 years.
Over 30 years.
So the service level stays the same, it's just a less senior person?
I think the numbers have been pretty close. I've gone to quite a few of the readings with Grace and the rest of the board, I think the number's been pretty close year after year, and then, like you said, slight increases in certain things.
Yeah.
There's none for Scholar Falls, do they go to another town?
We have, the towns that do not have, well, the city of Plasberg and the towns that do not have outreach sites have to come to our Plasberg office.
That would be, that would be our office here?
No, in the city of Plasberg.
Margaret Street.
Margaret Street.
Come to our main offices on Margaret Street.
The old large drugstore building.
So the only people that can come to, to, are people that live in the town?
Yep.
And they just have to have an address?
Yep.
Show you an address as well?
Yep.
It's a crazy question in some ways, at least I feel it is, but look back over the years, back to about 2005, and, I mean, even with this reduction because of a least senior person, it really has grown rapidly, and I believe you, we know better than anybody, the cost of the service to the town. It's, 2005, it was $9,600, and, you know, in 2013, it's going to be twice that. It's, it's grown more than 2% a year. And we know some of the costs, the...
Well, some things have impacted that. One of the things that's impacted that dramatically is the fact that the minimum wage in the state of New York has taken a significant increase since 2005. And quite frankly, as that happens, if you have somebody who's been working for you, who's already above the minimum wage, they still get, you know, corresponding increase. So when you think about what happened to the minimum wage, the minimum wage increased by, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but it was a significant...
But it hasn't doubled since 2005 to now, and the cost of services doubled. I guess what I'm, it's a leading question, I shouldn't do...
How many employees do you have?
In the town, just one.
And you're saying that because the minimum wage went up a couple dollars? It didn't even go up that much.
Cents, not even dollars.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It went up from, at one point it was like $575 to $725.
Yeah.
So $2.
So $2. But then on top of that, you've got, you know, we generally have 3% increases on wages a year. That's what we have.
It just seemed, doubling just seemed like a lot, you could almost take any position, and in the last six years, we wouldn't see the cost of that double goes up. I guess what I wondered, I was being, you know, saying I'm leaking a bit, I probably shouldn't, is the cost of the services, I mean, the cost of the supplies and the heat benefits and so on, my, my assumption is there's less state or grant dollars that go into the services. You're maintaining the service level, as you said. I would guess the cost of maintaining that, and that's really what I want to know, is the cost of maintaining that level being borne more by the local municipalities now? Because there's, there's less money there, the fuel oil that you buy now is a lot more in the fuel, fuel oil you bought six years ago? So I would assume that also increases the cost of the program?
No.
No, okay. So we're really just talking about the individual that delivers services, that's all this money goes to.
And the services that are provided.
That's not what I'm hearing. Well, there are.
We're not including that.
We're not funding those services.
We're not including the cost of taking 65 people to over 200 medical appointments? We're not considering the cost of that?
The volunteer wages, the volunteer reimbursements are provided through a separate contract.
Okay. This is just the salary for the person to be in the town.
And, and I assume insurance?
No, all the benefits are paid for by JCO.
Right there.
Yep. We pay all the standard insurances, plus we pay all the health insurance costs.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't matter, you know, we pick up, you know, health insurance, the retirement cost, and anything, any kind of unemployment insurance, disability, workers' comp, that's all paid for by JCO.
If this position was not there, the people that are noted in here, that got transport and so on, they would then have to access that through the Margaret Street office? Do you think, and I know I asked you this, but I think it's important to put on the table tonight, we may not talk about this again for a couple of years, do you think the, these services, 814 services to 589 households, would be provided to the same degree if that position was removed?
It couldn't.
How's that?
Because we have, we're just established as one of the United States. You take, I don't care what town you're talking about, you take any, you know, you take a person out of the equation, you know, if you were to come down to our office, especially this time of year, from October 1st through the end of March, you come to our office on any given day, you're going to see six, seven, eight people waiting in our lobby, okay? For a variety of services. And we only have limited staff, and it can only house so many people at that location. And would there be an impact on the services?
Yeah. One of the things, a number of years ago, we were actually involved in fighting a whole lot of this program, and the reason was that the, the number of people who live in that area, particularly people, they might be single parents, they're in those trailer parks, that this is, they can, they can gain access to these services through this program, through this location. They can't, it just, it becomes logistically almost impossible for them to, to deal with trying to get downtown to, to make these applications. One of the other things I wanted to ask you, which I don't see on here, and I thought it was one of the programs that was administered out of that location, there are food packages that people can buy?
Food co-op stopped.
Oh.
The Regional Food Bank discontinued the, the co-op for a very specific reason. Over the course of the last, you all know about the recession and this, okay? They've had such an increase in the amount of food required for food shelves, that the work that they were doing to set up the food cooperative really took away from the basic subsistence for low-income families and food pantries. So they discontinued that, because they had to put more effort into being able to get food out to the food shelves. So they, they actually discontinued that last, I think last November was the last month they did it. And the, the reasoning was very specific, they just couldn't do it and still be able to go out and garner the amount of food necessary to be able to get to the food shelves.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, in our food shelves, I mean, we operate a food shelf at each of our outreach sites, as well as one at, at Dirkie Street, on the back entrance to our building. This year, I anticipate that we will service over 5,000 families. Now, that's, that's just 5,000 families, and they can access the food shelf up to eight times a year. So we get an idea of the number of food packages that we're putting out.
Is there much of use in system?
No, no, I don't think so. Is there some? Obviously, you know, there isn't any system, I don't care what it is, but overwhelmingly, the people that we see, it's, we have some funding sources. First of all, we do, we're part of the Regional Food Bank, and through the Regional Food Bank, we're also part of Feed America. What that allows us to do is to set up agreements with Walmart, Sam's Club, Target, and last year, the vendors in, in the city and in the town contributed to JCO more than 104,000 pounds of food, and we pick up on a regular basis from those sites. That does not include bread, because we don't weigh the bread, but that's just food stuff that's given to us. And, and then we distribute that back out to all our, all our food shelves. And, you know, along with the grant that we get from the Regional Food Bank, along with all the fundraising efforts that we do, and, and quite frankly, we've been stretched, the increase has been significant. But it's been that way for all our programs. We're seeing people come in to do heat applications that we've never seen before. And, you know, we're seeing people apply for Christmas Bureau that we've never seen before. So, you know, clearly, there's been a significant increase in the number of services that we're providing agency-wide throughout the county, so.
Do you, do you have specific, I mean, if somebody's on a particular diet, they're diabetic or whatever, do you provide certain kinds of food? Because I know most of the food goes into the food shelves, at least the ones that I go through, don't, you know, there's a lot of carbohydrates, there's a lot of canned stuff, a lot of salt and everything that they can't handle.
Well, we've really been able to make a significant change there, and primarily, the way that we've made the change is because of the donations that we get through the local vendors. Target, Walmart, and Sam's Club have been absolutely phenomenal. They, they take things off their shelves basically three days before the sell-by date. They take meat and they will freeze it for us, so that it's frozen when we pick it up. They've now started giving us fresh produce, orange juices, all sorts of stuff like that that we can now distribute. That's really allowed us to be much more responsive to restrictive diets. So we've been able to, we're not perfect yet, but we're getting there.
That's not because they don't let their employees in.
It hit also that Panera does a nice job of contributing their breads each day to the...
There, there's, different vendors go different places. Panera does do that, Panera Street, but they just don't do it with us.
Do it at the soup kitchens.
Yeah, they're giving it to some of the...
Basically, am I right, there's three main food banks functioning in the city? There's you, and the Salvation Army, and the Methodist Church?
Salvation Army doesn't really do a lot. I mean, they, they, they do meals.
They do the meals.
And they do some emergencies, okay? But they don't, really, when you're talking about food shelves in the city, you really have to look at the Interfaith, which is at the Methodist Church?
Methodist.
And us.
Okay.
Now, a lot of times we talk about the, the big boxes, the big commercial, I think it was when we were at the United Ways kickoff, you really begin to see some of those huge corporate checks coming in, the contributions from the employees, as well as from the businesses. And I know, losing Wyatt, they usually were a very significant contributor, and, you know, some of these things, you don't think of the direct impacts, you know, the positive ones, the negative ones. My last question is, does our outreach worker go into the homes also if someone calls to do a home visit?
Generally, if it's, you know, normally, what, those folks would be seniors, and it would be handled through the senior outreach.
Okay.
Okay? Generally, what would happen there is that we, you know, Grace had a senior, we needed someone to go into their home, she'd contact the senior outreach program, the senior outreach program would send somebody else.
I, I think the part with abuse that always, you know, bothers me is that when someone who doesn't qualify gets a benefit, someone who does may not find there's enough for them, and that's unfortunate. I, I think with the outreach, getting to know the families and the people and working with them year after year, you have a better handle on who they are and what their needs are.
Besides, you know, most of our programs require that we document, you know, income.
Yeah.
So it doesn't matter whether we're talking about heat, it doesn't matter if we're talking about, you know, most of the services that are provided through, through the community outreach program are provided, are paid for, other than the wages, and the actual services are paid for through the community services block grant. The income guidelines for the community services block grant are at 125% of poverty. So for a family of four, we're talking about gross income of $23,000 a year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's a family of four. So we're not talking about huge incomes here, and we have to document their income. So if they get any kind of an emergency system, it could be, you know, rental assistance or an electric shut-off notice that, you know, we helped them out when there's something like that, generally, we're talking, you know, that kind of income. And most of our programs, our head starts at 100% of poverty, which is even lower. So all of our programs have some kind of income guidelines that people have to follow, and those are all set by, you know, generally by the feds. Probably the highest we have is our letterization program, which is at 185% of poverty. So it's not a lot.
How, how much is a single person's, is that family of four was $23,000, $20,000?
Yeah. It would be about, I think it's, I'd have to double check, so don't hold me to this, but it's around $18,000, $19,000.
$18,000, $19,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Bruce?
No.
It was very good to come out to us, appreciate your time. Any other questions? We don't have a draft resolution, but unless someone feels otherwise, we would generate one for Monday to continue the program, much as we've done before, and move forward.
As always, if you ever have any questions, feel free to call me, you can always call me at the office, and if you ever want me to come back, I'm always happy to see you guys.
Great. And doing something where we would try to get regular use of the larger part of buildings, something we could, while we look at it, see if we can make it work?
Sure, just let me know.
Okay.
Do you still, you still have that crow for me to write?
Huh?
Why? If I have to, if I have to lighten you, then it's not worth repeating.
No.
No, I was, I was wrong about a project some time ago, so I always tell everybody that, I'm only be crow over that.
It's really ended up being a great project.
It has, it has.
It really has.
Haven't seen or heard of any of the problems that I thought would arise from there, so I'm still ready. Cook it well.
Well, it won't be with me.
Cook it out.
I'm just glad that it came out and turned out well.
Thanks, Bruce.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Take care, thanks. Next, and I think it was Tom earlier said, my God, is that on the agenda? Next, and I think it was Tom earlier said, my God, is that on the agenda again? My God, it is, because I also have a draft resolution. We need to make a decision. We, we were here a while ago talking about the camera. It has become kind of an interesting topic. I think putting it back in the hopper was wise, you know, having Scott clarify the rationale to spend that much money on something that was proactive versus reacting. It was trying to go forward versus mop up. We all know the enormous number of places that money and a lot of money like that could go. I think it's been a good exercise, and I know I was feeling pretty comfortable before. I told Scott, as recent as today, it just, you know, I don't like it. Personally, I just don't like having to spend that much money on something like that. But I understand why we are, and I think there will be money saved, money becoming available to go after some of the other issues. Not waiting for a problem, maximizing more and more, they're trying to get in, fix whatever the water sewer problem is and get things back to normal. It's costly when that doesn't happen, as you all well know. The other thing, we've, we've talked more than once, and it's a message that seems to get lost, about the sharing of this. And I'll, I'll say roughly what I said before, I don't anticipate any different results of that. This is, if, if we decide to go forward with the purchase, it is costly. It's pretty high-tech material. I saw it demonstrated this past summer. You don't, it's not a chainsaw. And when someone comes in and says, can we borrow your camera? You don't give them the keys to the truck and say, make sure and wash it off when you're done. We need to devise a strategy and a plan. Our men, when available, would be the ones, I think, who would be in total control and operating. Their wages would need to be compensated as well as some cost of the use of the equipment. And I think you'll see that happen as we've done with other things that may not only help us to reduce the cost long-term, but certainly be of value to some of the neighboring municipalities. But we gotta put some things in place. We don't just say, yeah, pick it up and.
Will we be charging another municipality approximately what they have to pay to imagine from somebody else?
We need to have, and I know we have Water Sewer Committee, I really believe in it. I think Scott would need to work with the Water Sewer Committee, answer all their questions, and then it will come to this board and we'll ask some more questions. We aren't in it to take away any private contractor's work, of course, but intermunicipal sharing of services isn't at the expense of anybody as well. We don't, we don't lose money on that.
But you brought up a very good point, Bernie, one that we had to address that was ongoing for about 10 years. And that is, if we are, if we are offering a service that an outside contractor can offer, then we're in effect stepping on their toes.
Be careful.
You have to be very careful. We can call it intermunicipal sharing, but we have to be very clear about what do we get back? And, and the sharing part, to me, is a problem because we're, we're considering putting out a sizable amount of money for this. We're expecting to get some kind of remuneration back. And I don't mean in the, in the way of borrowing somebody's bulldozer or, or maybe a couple of their men's to do flagging or something like that. I think we have to make sure that there is a market for us to legally go out there and sell the service without being sued again, because that was, that was something we, you know, we don't, I don't ever want to be involved in.
I, there's a process, I think there's a process. We just have to move carefully and, you know, let Jim obviously, there has to be an agreement between municipalities, and that's the process.
There were remarks made one night here regarding conversation a person indicated they had with somebody in the city regarding the city's ability to, to provide equipment. The city does not have this equipment. The city has equipment that is substantially outdated, and the reality is to people in the city, when you approach them and you talk with them, they'd be the first ones to lay out for you what the limitations of the equipment that they have is. There was a unit that came off the, off the Air Force Base that was mentioned, checked into that. That unit is, it's not operational, it was not operational when we got it. And when we checked into what it would cost to upgrade it, there was like a $30,000 expense, and that didn't have anything to do with dealing with the upgrades that were necessary to the locomotion equipment as part of that unit. In other words, you, you put that thing in and it's got to be able to crawl through the line, and, and that wasn't, that wasn't functioning. So the fact that there's supposedly this other equipment out there has proven not to be the case. When we talk about outside expense, the, the only place where we've been able to obtain the equipment is out of the Albany area. It's very expensive to do that because you end up having to pay for their operator to come up and stay here and, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have the operator tied up for three weeks, and that's not at all unusual when you've got a major project, you know, you're gonna have housing expenses associated with it. So when I talk with Scott, Scott's indicating that he feels that if we didn't buy this piece of equipment, we could find ourselves averaging an annual expense of about $60,000. Well, if you do that, you're gonna, you're gonna have paid substantially more than the purchase price of this equipment over a three-year period. Even if we cut them back, even if we cut that estimate back and said it was $40,000 a year, which would not be a lot of time on a unit. If it were $40,000 a year, we, we'd be running, you know, the cost that would be, you pay the same cost over about three and a half years.
Problem that happens with that, you know, I, I was one of the first with Scott to go through a few questions, say, it's killing me to have to do this right now, but what you're telling me makes sense. What I think happens with that, Marty, is if we spent $30,000, or if we spent 30 and nothing for two years and then it was 60, those become expenses that just kind of go through a voucher system. They, they don't even really get our attention unless our auditors, you know, rub our nose in it, so you don't see it. He's effectively looked at the cost of doing business and brought that to our attention, that, you know, it, it doesn't feel as bad when it's a little here and there and once in a while when we need it. But when you step back, you're right, over a number of years, you say, my God, I could have bought the daily thing.
And one of the big things that we have to do, I mean, I think we know it, we've talked with it, Jerry, Tom are on the Sewer Committee, we have really got to tackle this whole, I, the problem of infiltration. And the fees that we are paying for wastewater treatment by the City of Plasberg, every time we have a bad rainstorm, you know, our charges go up. And so we have got to, we've got to tighten up the system, and this is, this is the type of equipment that you have to have to be able to do that. I don't know, I mean, I hate the idea of the expenditure, this kind of, this kind of money. At the same time, when I look at it and I realize the technology behind the equipment or whatever, and I compare that to what we're paying for other kinds of equipment, it really doesn't seem terribly out of line. You know, I mean, if we were buying, if we were buying another truck for the highway department, we'd be sitting here talking $200,000?
Yeah. I'd like to address just a couple of things, because today was a busy day. It was my first day back, and I did meet with Scott, I met with Bernie, I went over a lot of different things. One of the things, and there were two concerns I had about that, one of them was in committee. And I told Scott that I, I really had a hard time supporting a purchase at the end of the year. It looks like it's a use it or lose it mentality. I said, we're sending the wrong message. I acquiesced to a bid process with the idea that if the bids were too high, we could throw them all out. There was only one bidder. That sends a very clear message, this is a specialized piece of equipment, and if we wait till next year to bid it, the contractor's gonna know he can raise the cost up. We have the money in the 2012 budget to pay for this. I think that not moving forward is going to be detrimental to us. If we bid it again next January, February, March, next October, the price is gonna come in substantially higher than 154,400.
Also, there was an attempt to get other bids.
That's what I asked about. I was, I was disappointed that there was only one. This is a specialized piece of equipment. It's not possible to get that. And, and again, I gotta give, I gotta give Scott credit. He, he's got 13 points here that is very, very hard for somebody to argue with. I think that he's, he's made a case, he's certainly made a case that has changed my mind. I think that we need to move forward on this. Now, I wanna, I wanna address one other thing, and I wanna thank, thank Mr. Andrews for bringing this, because I didn't see the article in the paper. There's a couple of things that Colby addresses, and he would have been, he would have been well-served if he had sat down and talked to somebody on the board. Okay? It's inconceivable, but municipalities countywide cannot share such a truck. There is not such a truck in Clinton County. So after we purchase this, then the opportunity would be there for countywide sharing, intermunicipal sharing of this truck. I, I think that the next argument is going to be, well, why do we have to be, be the people to do it? Why not somebody else? Nobody else is stepping up to the plate. And the town of Plasberg has taken leadership over a lot of things.
And if nobody else has 33 miles of sewer.
Another, another thing is, could we not contract out to, to private sector? We did contract out to private sector, and it cost us $50,000. Marty, you touched on that. So I, you know, a lot of this would have been answered, and, and the article may have read a little bit differently if Mr. Reed had contacted Scott and asked him the questions before he, he published. But it, it does bring to light that the public is talking about things, and Scott has addressed those things in the 13 points. And these were addressed before this article. I got these, I think, a week or so, because I made my comments to the board about, I was, I was a little bit put aside because it was only one bid. But again, it is what it is. You can't make people bid.
I, I shared with both Scott and with Jim, a conversation that I had with the, the head of the Services, I'm gonna call it.
Public Service Commission?
The, well, the Building Services for State University here in Plasberg, and indicated to them, you know, we had a camel truck, and we're looking at the purchase of this. And in both instances, they were quite enthused about that. And in fact, we're arranging to set a time for them to come up and to be able to look at the kind of equipment that we have, and if there are instances where, you know.
A lot of Plasberg State's been there since the 50s, too.
Yeah.
Their, their infrastructure's gotta be.
They've got all kinds, they've got, they've got heat pipes underground and all kinds of stuff. You've worked on a lot of it, Paul. And, and don't have, you know, don't have the equipment to, to get at it, and they're, they're doing exactly what we're talking about. I mean, they're having to rent this stuff, and it comes up out of Albany, and it's got a heck of a price tag on it when you, when you rent it. If they had it available, even if it's available for V here in the community, you know, they'll use it. So I think we can offset expenses in that fashion. But I think, you know, if we just look at our own infrastructure and the, and the problems we have and the, and the work that's before us going over, forward for the next five years, this is a vehicle that will be put to good work.
Is there any other general discussion? I'm sensing the consensus is that we could go to the draft that you have. I put a number on mine, and we can have more discussion there. Danielle, do you have a resolution for bid award for one new mainline sewer camera system?
I have a resolution with no number.
Okay. Well, let's put a number on it. It would be 326. And if you wouldn't mind reading that one aloud, please.
Resolution number 326, bid award for one new mainline sewer camera system. Whereas, resolution 012-297 authorized advertisement for bids for one new mainline sewer system, and all bids received were opened on November 7th, 2012. And whereas Scott Stoddard, Director of Water and Wastewater, and the Town Clerk have reviewed all bids received, therefore, be it resolved, the Town Board approves the purchase as recommended, and that the Water and Wastewater Director is hereby authorized to make said purchase. And be it further resolved that the purchase of a new mainline sewer camera system be awarded to the low bidder, Science Con Equipment of 7494 West Henrietta Road, Rush, New York, in the amount of $154,400. And be it further resolved that the payment fee be payable from the 2012 Water and Wastewater Budget Account Number WS1610-2000, and that a copy of this resolution be given to the Director of Waste, of Water and Wastewater Department and Finance Officer.
Have motion.
Go move.
Mr. Stewart, second.
Second.
Mr. Renada, any discussion?
In the second resolved, I'd like to see the low bidder changed to sole bidder.
I don't have any problems with that. Anyone have any other concerns? Tom, do you agree with that? I'd also like to change Finance Officer to Manager. We need to pay attention to that. Is that okay with you, Tom?
Yes. Yes. That is the right terms.
Yep. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Thomas Wood.
Yes.
Martin Manix.
Yes.
Paula Moy.
Yes.
Gerard Renada.
Yes.
Renard Bassett.
Yes, resolution carries. If I go back to the agenda, that was the last item on, but as you might have been able to anticipate, I shared this with Marty earlier, and I've got plenty of copies, we'll give another one, today, and as of this time and point, I still haven't read this word for word. In today's mail, I received this notice from NISIG. I also had a phone call from Dave Gridley, and Dave and I spoke a bit, he wanted to be sure I had this. Couple of just key overview things. This is relative to two things, as I understand it, based on my conversation with Dave. They would like to expand natural gas to the Nova Bus Facility. You, I'm sure know the motive for that. And there's an interest in amending the, my words, amending the franchise agreement such that they would be able to expand service and service area within the town without having to go to the Public Service Commission each time, making it easier. One of my comments to Dave was, generally speaking, I said, I'll speak for myself, nobody else is aware of this yet, if I've got natural gas, fiber, public water, public sewer, we're in pretty good shape for commercial residential properties. So if this is going to help us in bringing this to those people who want it, I would be supportive. But as we oftentimes say, the devil's in the details. We discussed, using myself as an example, the cost of natural gas in the North Country for heating over fuel oil, and again, there's just no comparison. He indicated that that may be the case, and very quickly brought up what Marty has worked a great deal on. He's gotten some positive feedback from NISIG, but nobody's got natural gas yet. I said, you're, you're coming up Baker Road, we want to go down Baker Road, Baker Road Extension between Route 3 and Route 22. And how is this managed when we have four homes that want to tie in, and then there are two that don't and one that does? The guy in the end gets dumped because of the break in the sequence based on existing. He acknowledged that allowing, and we had some other conversations today, allowing homeowners to tap in hasn't always been, hasn't been as user-friendly by NISIG the past couple of years. And... of years, and that it hasn't been as easy with NISIG the past couple of years to expand service areas. I said, "Well, that's something before I support, I want to see as a benefit to my community, and we need to revisit that." What he pointed out to me at that point was, and I'll point out to you, on Wednesday, December 12, at 3:00 PM and at 7:00 PM, there is a public hearing at Clinton Community at the Stafford Center. He suggested we might want to be there and express our concerns, and certainly submit a written statement as well. So, you know, I don't think it hurts if all of us go. Certainly, one or two of us should be there. You might want to compose something of your own interest and concerns. I think as a Town Board, it might be good that we have a statement of concern of how this might work. Again, I haven't been able to read the letter. I also distributed this to our codes and zoning, highway and water sewer folks, and said, "If you take a look."
What would be the potential downside?
I can, I'd like to address that, if I could. Because this is more of the same with NISIG, this is cherry picking. They want to serve Nova Bus, but the agreement they have with us forbids it because of the distance. Marty worked for how many months, Marty, to try to get service to people who have gas at both ends of the road? NISIG doesn't serve just up here, they also serve the Route 22B area, okay? They could connect, even if the people in the middle didn't want it, they could come from both directions. Yet they made Marty fight with them for two or three months?
Twenty-four months.
Okay. Shows you how well my thumb is on the pulse. Cumberland Head. Cumberland Head was a few people short in NISIG. Let me get it out of my system, Jim, because if I don't, I'll put it all in writing, and I'll embarrass the Town Board at this meeting. Plain and simple, unless we get something in writing that changes the distances to serve the residents of the town of Plasberg and changes the numbers so that it serves the residents of the town of Plasberg, all we're doing is giving NISIG the ability to cherry pick some more. And they'll be back down the road looking for some more extensions, when and if another project comes in at a different location.
Okay. Let me just say this, I think we should negotiate and get those things that you want. I don't deny that. But I don't think we ought to deny them Nova Bus if we can't get all we want.
Believe me, they're not going to go away without Nova Bus.
Yes.
They're not going to...
All we're talking about here, Jim, is, you know, it's gaining for our taxpayers a payment for them to be able to profitably bring that line to Nova Bus, and believe me, they will benefit and benefit greatly by having that. This is, it's criminal. I mean, they have, you know, this is the same company that has got, you know, that is selling electricity, and believe me, they would much prefer to sell the electricity than they would to sell the natural gas to residential customers.
Okay, I'm not supporting, all I'm saying is that I think we should try and get everything we can from them, you know, in exchange...
You know, and again, guilty as charged, I was there when the first franchise went through, and I thought we got everything that we could. I now see that there's gaping holes in that agreement.
Well, nobody's against that.
I disagree with Jim, too. I definitely think we get something, they don't get it.
What are you disagreeing with? All I'm saying is, we get everything we can possibly get, but we don't deny them going to Nova Bus.
Wrong. I'll back it up another way. I'll applaud Tom for saying that publicly, because I don't want to take the posture that, "We're going to negotiate with you, and we're going to negotiate hard with you, but we're going to cave in." Okay? No, we're going to negotiate, we're going to negotiate hard.
Wow.
And they're going to have to face off to that.
Well, I don't think anybody, well, nobody, I'm not opposed to that, believe me like that.
Sorry to dump on you, Counselor.
No, no.
Now, this is, it cuts close to home, because again, I was on the board when the franchise came through, and all NISIG wanted to do was serve Clinton Correction Facility. That's all they wanted. They had a huge supply.
I don't think they're a bunch of sweethearts, I just think we have to...
And they said, "We'll pick up a few places along the way." We'll digress a little bit, we'll hit with three.
I wanted to see us, I wanted to see the town of Plasberg investigate having its own natural gas utility.
Read the letter. There is a public hearing. It might be good that we coordinate a little bit, or have a couple of rounders...
I think we should go to the public hearing and argue with each other.
It's a lot more intricate.
I will guarantee you that I will be there, that I will.
Good.
So, we should, we'll get a do-over.
Good. You also have the minutes. Please look them over as you do.
Do we just, are you bringing anything else up?
I'm not going to respond to that, Counselor. I have another report that you need to put in as part of a draft for resolutions, building and grounds, that will be added to the packet. And there's nothing too dynamic or outstanding in any of that. Nobody has anything else, I'm going to adjourn us, but before I do, I'm going to ask one more time, does anybody have anything else?
Me. Something, then I saw someplace in here that I wanted to ask about.
Just a minute, okay?
[inaudible]
Excuse me, it was in an email that I read, it's a different issue.
Okay.
Do we have to, do I have to read them all?
No, these are just drafts, we're not passing them, it's extraordinary usually to pass one in a work session. With the camera, we need to get moving on that, we're going to be, as you all remember, when we get to a certain point in the year, things slow down because of closing the fiscal year and opening up the next one. So, I'm going to adjourn us at 8:28.
Excuse me, 7:28.